Good evening, Jane.
Good evening, Jane.
Joseph, how are you tonight?
Ah, pretty good.
That's good. You catching those lobsters out there?
Unbelievably.
You what?
Every time I pull up a trap, it has a keeper. Almost no shots.
That's a good thing.
That's a bad thing. We need shots to have. I'm, I need shots now, so I'll have some in the future.
I hope Mahoney's not listening.
You never know.
Mahonees.
Yes.
How is, how, what's the water temperature now? Is it up in the sixties?
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's been an onshore breeze onto the beach. The water's real warm but dirty.
Yeah, I think hopefully they tested it again today, so tomorrow we hope to get good results back and open the beach.
All you need is a change of the wind, an offshore wind.
Yeah. Not sure what causes it, but the, the guess is that it was from the rainstorm we had over the weekend.
That's usually what happens. The runoff. Ah, the DPW did not do a good job on the ramp this month.
Already discussed it. We, uh, I had a meeting with Tony yesterday. And we went through a number of things, and that was one of them. And it, it has a lot to do with the, the dead low tide.
Yeah, but if you start at low tide, up at the high tide mark, you're not going to cover much.
Well, how would you do that?
You have to start at the low tide mark.
And, and work backwards?
Yeah, work up, not work down the slip.
And, and I think that's what happened. They, it, it got worked.
It worked, it worked from top to bottom this time.
Yeah, well, I was talking with Jack about it, and he said he'd make sure that he got it straightened out, and it'll be done one tide per month.
Right.
So that should make everybody happy.
No, it won't make everybody happy.
Nothing will. Nothing will. The quiet.
Mark's here.
Hey, Mark. He is?
Well, I have a, on my screen, I see an old picture of him. He's probably logged on, and here he is.
Hey, guys, that's our new picture. I took that yesterday, Joe.
What you doing? Are you here white today?
I'll be back.
Now, you look better this way. Somebody's scraping the dinner plate.
I know. Clean white gloves.
How are you?
I'm fine, Gene. How are you?
Good, thank you. Okay, what have we got here? Six twenty-eight. How many of your members do you expect tonight?
I don't know. I know, I believe, I see DeWitt, and I believe Barbara and Deborah and Judy.
Oh, great.
Five of us.
Dana is coming as well.
Oh, good, okay. And there's Bob.
Very red today.
Hello.
A little bit better, not much.
Hi, Judy.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you, everybody, for sure. Happy summertime?
I know. And it is summer.
I love that. Hi, Barbara.
Hello, how are you?
Well, yourself?
Also well. And I'm happy that so far, I think it's supposed to get really hot, is it on Friday? But so far, it's just been lovely, perfect.
It has been lovely, and I, I wish it would be warm on a day I have off. That'd be better.
Well, I'm happy with the mid seventies. That's perfect for me. I can guard without.
I'm an eighty-five degree kind of girl.
Oh.
No. Where did you grow up, Judy? Is that?
No place warm enough. That's the trouble.
See, I grew up someplace very warm, so for me, mid seventies is lovely.
Yeah, I grew up in Vermont. I'm, I'm chasing the warm. I'm not south enough.
Someone's talking about their second home.
Have we got Josh yet?
Yeah.
Tony?
Yep, I'm here, Jean.
Hey, Josh.
Hi. How are you?
Job's still open.
Yeah. It'll be waiting for me in a couple of years.
There's something very Victorian about your presence here.
That's a fake background.
Oval office.
Oh, that's not, that's the painting Lydia did.
Oh, that's true.
And it's beautiful.
There it is.
See, that's Lydia's painting.
Hey, Tony.
Antonio.
Sorry, I'm late. Had some technical difficulties. Give me a second. I'll set us up on the front.
Why don't, why don't we do this while you're, while you're getting ready? I see a quorum of the finance committee, so it's Vender Slice, Zahora Beatty, Tarmy. Uh, maybe I don't see it.
Do you?
Uh, DeWitt Brown is here, yes. Okay. So I think the finance committee meeting is, portion of this meeting is in order.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have everybody, so we could begin with the, uh, I make a motion to open the joint meeting of the Board of the Selectment Advisory and Finance Committee on Wednesday, June twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty by Zoom.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Josh, enter mine.
Jean can't be eye. Tony, how we doing?
Good, we're live.
Great. So do we need to call the finest, uh, meeting to order?
Bob already did.
We just did.
Sorry, I missed that. Well, that just, that really doesn't bode well for the rest of the evening. Okay.
So where we go? Does it get COVID vaccine announcement? Clinics at the Lynn City Hall for Lynn and the Hunt residents for six months to five years old, July eleventh and July twenty-fifth from four to six P M. Call seven eight one five nine eight four thousand and ask for the Public Health Department to make an appointment. Enter on the Johnson Street side of Lynn City Hall, and the clinic is on the same level. Opening comments, do we have any?
Yeah, there's some announcements to make.
Okay.
Would you like me to do that, Jean?
Please.
Okay, um, the sort of standard ones here. Uh, two thousand twenty-two residence parking, parking stickers are available for purchase at the hunt.org. Stickers are ten dollars each. All bills due to the town must be paid, and the census completed. Uh, the compost area is open on Wednesday and Saturday from nine A M. to three P M. Two thousand twenty-two resident sticker is required. Visit the hot dot org for a list of accepted material. Recycling for metal, white goods, TVs, computers, et cetera, is the last Saturday of each month from eight A M. to twelve P M. noon behind the DPW on Flash Road. Two thousand twenty-two resident sticker is required. Visit hot.org for information and required fees. Uh, there's a farmer's market, uh, coming up, a few farmers markets coming up, um, this summer. Um, Saturday, July sixteenth, August twentieth, it's September seventeenth, from ten A M. to one P M. at Flash Road Park. Visit the farmer's market page at the hot.org for a vendor application, volunteer information, and updates. Look, we are looking for all types of vendors, including crafts, food, community groups, and more. So those will be exciting. And we have some activities coming up for the Fourth of July weekend, uh, for the third and the Fourth of July. On the third of July, uh, the Horrible Parade will begin at five P M. at the Spring Road Basketball Courts in March to the Flash Road Playground area. Um, on the Fourth of July, the annual Tortoise and Hare Three Mile Road Race will start at eight A M. Registration at seven thirty A M. in the front of the fire station. There's also a one-mile road race for kids. Uh, a route map can be found on the community calendar under the date event. Uh, excuse me, event date. Um, field races will begin at nine A M. These are the sprints for the kids and so on behind the fire station. Prizes for all competitors. After the races, there will be three-legged race for children and adults, finishing it off with the annual egg toss. Town Hall will be closed on the Fourth of July, so, um, personally, I'm very excited to see the Fourth of July activities back, so, uh, and also the farmer's market. So that's, uh, all I have for, um, opening comments. Um, I don't know if Jean or Mark, Tony have anything to add?
I was going to, before we do that, I was gonna ask, Tony, are you gonna discuss it all, the July ninth date? Tony?
Apologize, I was muted. Um, yes, I can do that now, if you'd like.
Yeah, why not? Well, while we're talking about the Fourth of July, yeah, let's do it.
Okay, uh, so, you know, we, we talked a little bit about the fireworks in the past. I'll repeat it. Um, unfortunately, we were not able to get, um, fireworks on the Fourth of July. Um, we uh, asked about getting fireworks, you know, on the second or the third, and, you know, with, with last, with the last couple of years of COVID, um, many firework companies went out of business because a lot of towns weren't able to have fireworks. And that's really when they make, you know, most of their, uh, money is because of the Fourth of July, um, celebrations, so we were offered the fifth or the sixth, but, you know, that being in the middle of the week, Tuesday or Wednesday, we asked, um, the same company that always does our fireworks, if they were able to, you know, come on Saturday the ninth instead. So we figured, you know, Saturday being a, would be a better day for people to enjoy, so the fireworks will be on Saturday, July ninth. They will be launched off of Bailey's Hill like usual. The fireworks will probably go off right around nine o'clock. This upcoming week will make announcements and robo-calls about, you know, the events, how they impact road traffic and parking. Willow Road, the entirety of Willow Road from the golf course to the wharf will be closed to vehicular traffic and no street parking, starting at six o'clock on, on the ninth. The Bass Point area will turn into a one-way. So when you come up Castle Road and you enter Bass Point, at six, starting at six o'clock, you'll, you'll have to take a right and basically do a one-way loop around Bass Point because there's only parking available on one side and it gets tight over there, so we do a one-way at Bass Point. The Wharf Parking Lot will be closed and cleared around noon on Saturday the night. And we will, we've been in meetings, you know, myself, Police Department, Fire Department, DPW, Emergency Management and the Harvard Master, I've already had a couple of meetings regarding, you know, the Fourth of July and the setup and the ops plan, and we had another one today, we have another one next week, and we will be publicizing, you know, that information as we get closer to the event. I also want to say thank you to Jen McCarthy for all the work she's doing. She'll, she's in the bank parking lot, she was there today, she'll be there tomorrow and Friday afternoon. Her phone number, if you are interested in donating or purchasing a T-shirt, and all the proceeds go to the fireworks. Her number is seven eight one three one six seven three zero nine. And like I said, she's gonna be in the bank parking lot tomorrow and Friday afternoon, selling shirts from four-thirty to about seven o'clock.
Thanks Tony, it should be a great event. Mark, do you have anything?
Let me think, just one thing, I noticed that Tudor Beach was shut down. Advisory has put up on Tudor Beach for bacteria counts that were above the limit. We, we have retested that Tony?
Yep, we took a re, a sample today, sent it to the lab, we'll have a result tomorrow. I think, I think the, the cause of that was the amount of rain we had on Monday. So I suspect that this sample will come back better and the beach will be open again, but we will re, we'll retest again, we'll take another sample tomorrow, in case this test comes back negative, we'll have another sample to send to the lab again. We'll announce that tomorrow or Friday.
You know, this beach testing is one of my pet peeves, I think I've mentioned in the past that I think the state really has to do a better job at figuring this out because, if you think about it, so we have, we have, we have a rainstorm and we test. You know, the day before, the beach was fine. And then the test came back positive. So we're really testing for the day before, not today. And it's really, it's, you know, either the scientists have to figure out a way to get more rapid results or something should change because ninety-nine percent of the time, I'm sure the beach is fine. And we're generally testing on the wrong day. But I'm glad, I'm sure we'll be open this weekend, that'll be great, thank you Tony.
Tony, is there any same-day testing like Mark is talking about?
No, it's a twenty-four hour test, unfortunately. So like Mark was saying, you know, unfortunately, the way that it works is, you know, the negative test is for the sample we collected on Monday. We don't get the result until Tuesday. So the people on Tuesday, you know, you can't go to the beach on Tuesday, but there were people on the, on the beach on Monday. And so, you know, by Tuesday, it's probably, we'll see with the results tomorrow, but by Tuesday, it probably was clean, so it's just, it's frustrating, but we'll just stay on top of it, it's a requirement, so just try to, you know, produce as often as possible when we get a negative and get it tested.
And I think everyone should know that, that Zach and his crew do the testing every Monday so that we have consistent results coming in to us at the beginning of each week.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think it's good that we do it on Monday because if there is a negative result, then we have an opportunity to retest it before the next weekend. You know, some is a shot, and, you know, every day on the beach is a precious day, so. We don't want to spend people from enjoying the beaches and so, I think it's great, we do it on Monday. Nine times out of ten, we test again and it's fine.
Right, and we don't have combined sewer and stormwater system, so. It's, it's, it's not like a situation at Kings Beach where it's a serious bacteria issue here in the heart, we have really clean beaches. I just want to emphasize, you know, most likely it's due to the heavy rain.
Which, which we encountered over the weekend. Okay, anything else? Advisory and Finance Committee. Tony, you want to?
Mr. Chairman, did we talk about the, we did, I stepped out for a minute, the Hawes Parade and the, and the female race, we did, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, so moving into the joint meeting?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'll make a motion, in accordance to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-three B, the Board of Selectmen with concurrence of the Advisory and Finance Committee authorize, authorizes the transfer of funds from one appropriation to another as listed in the document provided by the Finance Director.
Seconded. All right, so Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-three B, authorizes the Board of Select, by a joint vote of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee for the town to transfer funds from unvoted account to another voted account. And we do this in an effort to balance our budget at the end of the year. We have thirty days, fifteen on either side of the end of a fiscal year, so it's basically June fifteenth to July fifteenth to do so. I believe that everything, everything that we need to accomplish is listed on this spreadsheet. We were notified at the end of the day that, that the Assessors Office has additional needs and, but it wasn't prepared in time for tonight's meeting, so it may require another meeting before July fifteenth. But we will follow up with everyone should have received the, the documents provided by the Finance Director, Allison Nieto, who's on the call, Allison, do you want to walk us through these transfers?
Yeah, I can do that. Let me just pull it up. So I sent two documents, one shows the transfers kind of to and from the various accounts, and then another is a summary of all of the accounts, that kind of a one-pager, so I can do the transfers individually and walk through them.
Sorry to interrupt, but, oh, I was gonna ask you to share, so, thanks.
I'm gonna, this is going to, this, I'm sharing the summary. It's a little bit easier for folks who are paying, you know, from folks who are paying attention that are on the, on the call here, but Allison, if you could go through them one by one, like you said.
So, the first transfer will be from Assessors' part-time employees, which is a salary account to the Assessors' purchased services account, which is an operating budget account. So that's a transfer of sixty-three hundred to cover, there's a current deficit in the Assessors' purchased services. So that's the first transfer. The second transfer is from Town Hall Capital Outlay to a number of different operating accounts within the Town Hall budget. There were slight deficits in purchased services, heating oil and building repairs. So that transfer is for six thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-five cents.
You want us to hold questions to the end, or do you want to do questions as we go?
We can do questions as we go, if you want.
So the capital outlay, seven thousand dollars, what, what is it that either came in under budget or is not getting done?
So, the capital outlay account, it's, we set aside, you know, an amount to do like, a lot of deferred maintenance needs for Town Hall throughout the year, so for larger things. I don't know that we necessarily delayed anything, Tony, do you want to speak to this?
Usually, we try to, you know, it's, it's an item where, at the end of the budget, at the end of the fiscal year, if we're able to, if we don't need to use those funds for these, like, if we don't need them for this transfer, then we may use the funds if necessary to make those deferred maintenance repairs. Since we ended up spending a little bit more in some of the purchased services and heating oil, you know, we're, and actually, some building repairs and maintenance as well. It's, it's not that nothing, that certain things aren't getting done, it's just a matter of managing the budget appropriately. So, you know, if there was, if there, if we couldn't pull from capital outlay, we would have found a different source. There's, there are plenty of building pairs and maintenance needs in the Town Hall, but certainly not things that can't be dealt with in the next fiscal year.
Understood.
Okay. So then the third transfer is from rubbish trash collection, which is part of the rubbish operating budget. The transfer into regular part-time employees in the rubbish account and rubbish overtime for full-time employees. So it's just a transfer of one thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-two cents. The rubbish salary account was slightly overspent on part-time employees. And we had a savings in the trash collection budget. So that's to cover that.
Trash collection budget can vary from year to year based on the amount of tonnage that's collected at the curb and what the market rate is for recycled materials.
Right, and we had also planned this budget prior to the contract, current contracts being signed, so we had overestimated that budget anyway. The next transfer is one that came from the school department. And so they had an increased need that came up during the year for their special education transportation. So the school committee, the superintendent proposed and the school committee voted on it to transfer from special education tuition in amount of thirty-two thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars and fifty cents to the special education transportation line item to cover that.
And that was due to an unexpected need of transportation to special education students outside of the district. But there'll still be a hundred thousand dollars left in that account which will be reverted back to the
Allison, correctly for one, but spent transportation is outside that school spending, right?
Correct, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that's actually the reason why we have to vote on it in this fashion is because it's not part of their salary and operating budget. Okay, the next transfer, we had, we had told the Finance Committee kind of for the past few months that we expected our legal budget to be overspent. But we wanted to wait towards the end of the fiscal year, so we had, you know, we had a better idea of what that number actually was. And it is about fifty thousand dollars, I'm still waiting for two bills to come in, but I've estimated them kind of on the higher end. So I'm proposing to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars from unemployment benef, unemployment payments, which is part of our benefits budget, and twenty-five thousand dollars from our public health assistant salary budget. Now, there, there's savings in these two lines, we didn't have anybody apply for unemployment benefits. We budgeted twenty-five thousand dollars a year, so that was unspent. The reason why we have a savings on the public health assistant salary, if you remember, for FY twenty-two, we had increased the public health budget, you know, primarily because of COVID. However, we received federal funding again this year, which we weren't certain of at the time that the budget was set last year, so we ended up, you know, spending out of the ARPA funds for a lot of the COVID-related costs and not having to use the general fund, so that's why there's a savings there.
And that would be true of the one coming up called Public Health Nurse, too?
Correct, yep. So, we had, you know, again, we had budgeted just because we didn't know we were receiving additional COVID funds. But we were, we've been charging, you know, the federal COVID funds for our public health nurse, our public health inspector and the public health assistant.
Thank you Uncle Sam, it was real, you and I.
So the next transfer, it's just a five hundred dollar transfer, I've been projecting salaries the end of the fiscal year, technically includes the payroll for this week, which will be paid out next week. And I projected we were gonna be a little bit short in the town administrator's salary line, and that is because Tony's contract was settled after we had set the budget, so we knew we were gonna be short by this small amount. I'm just proposing to transfer it from a little bit that we have in savings from the town administrator telephone budget.
Oh, Tony can't just give five hundred fifty-eight bucks back? Just kidding.
The Finance Committee is willing to give back our salaries.
Exactly.
Okay, the next one is a five hundred ninety-five dollar transfer from the Building Inspections Training Budget to the Inspection Services Part-Time Employees Budget. So we had the administrative assistant in the Building Inspector's Department leave, Kim Campo, last fall. She cross-trained for a week with the new assistant, KK Sherber. So we had to pay both salaries for kind of that week that we weren't originally anticipating. So that's why there's a small overage in the salary account. There's a savings in the training budget, basically the inspectors can attend trainings and get reimbursed for it. There was some money left there for, I guess, training that wasn't attended, so that's what we proposed to transfer. The next transfer, as Bob had said, is again, we had savings in the public health nurse line because we've been charging those salaries to COVID. because we've been charging those salaries to COVID. And I'm proposing to transfer thirty-three thousand five hundred, thirty thousand of that is going to go to beaches and park supplies. Tony and Zach had asked if we had any savings in the budget that could be used for some purchases that they wanted to do at year end. I don't know, Tony, if you want to speak more to that?
Yeah, I mean, it's exactly what it sounds like. So it's, it's like new trash barrels, new trash barrel lids, picnic tables, park equipment, maybe some signage, you know, flags. It's all small things that, you know, we are, we're going to be able to use out of this account.
So that's for that. And then there's just a small amount, thirty-five hundred for an invoice that arrived on my desk today that was originally supposed to be paid out of snow and ice, but town meeting had already appropriated sufficient funding to cover the snow and ice deficit. So I propose to transfer this amount to highways and streets to pay for this invoice. It was for damage that was done to a residential property from a plow. The next transfer, I'm proposing twenty-one thousand one hundred dollars from savings in website services. Again, we have a savings here because we've been using ARPA funds to pay for our website services. So this left a savings in that account. And I, the transfer is to police capital outlay. And this is to buy a new electronic message board trailer that the chief had asked Tony about. So we identified the savings to go towards that.
Right, that, that board we use that when you come into town, right at the end of the causeway, you know, we use it a lot to get message out to the public. And it's, you know, probably outlasted its intended lifespan by a good five years because of all the maintenance done by the previous chief. But it's on its last leg. So we don't want to waste any time and we want to get that, get a new one purchased possible. And just backing up on that snow and ice one, the committee's knowledge, you know, accidents do happen. When they do happen, we, we basically, you know, inspect the damage, get a quote from, you know, depending on what it is. If it's a construction related, you know, get it, get a few quotes for the repair. And then we have the option of going to insurance to cover. But when the deductible, you know, no, no different than dealing with the, you know, a small fender bender on your own car. Deductible exceeds or it's not worth, you know, potentially increasing your cost of insurance. We prefer to just pay it out of the general fund. But we do do, we do go through that due diligence.
And so, yeah, that's the total amount. It's just over a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars.
And we're, we're, we're not touching the reserve fund.
No.
That will all drop, whatever's left will drop to free cash.
Yeah, there's eighty-eight thousand dollars in the reserve fund left. So even with all of this movement, I'm, I'm sorry?
No, I saw it. Cover us for the one day left.
But I think where you were going, Allison, is like some of the, you know, when we are looking at this and making decisions about potentially moving money into an account for end of the year spending that we might want to accomplish. You know, one of the questions I have that Allison, you know, already knows I'm going to ask is what does free cash look like, you know, with all of these transfers for next year? Because certainly if free cash looks low, then we don't want to pull from these leftover funds. We want to make sure that that free cash amount is healthy. She takes a look at that. It's not certified at this point, but she gets a preliminary view of it. And Allison, you took a look at this and.
So Tony, you, you started that by saying we're going to set up an account for what sounded like this fiscal year expenses that sort of drift into next year, if I understood it.
Any, any unspent funds from this year will drop to free cash for not the upcoming year, but the following.
The following year, yeah.
Unless, unless, unless it's encumbered.
Unless it's encumbered, right. So if we, if we encumber, if we have an expense of this year and we haven't received the bill yet, we haven't been able to pay for it yet, we can encumber that amount and pay for it once the bill comes in, even though the bill might come in after July first. What I was saying was, you know, most of these transfers are within the, the same account. So you vote, for instance, assessors, you vote, all of them, you vote, you know, expenses, and then you vote payroll. In that example there, assessors were just moving money from payroll to expenses. So the bottom line amount in the assessors budget isn't changing. We're just moving it from that account to the other. In some of these, we're moving from a totally different account into a totally different department. So in those cases, Allison and I look at what is our, you know, projected amount of free cash? Because we don't want to deplete that for two fiscal years in the future. So we did look at that. Allison, do you want to share what you project for not the upcoming, but the following?
Yeah, so I, it's still not certain. You know, we still have one more payroll to run. We still have a couple of weeks left, you know, for invoices to come in and spend. But I'm still projecting about a million dollars in free cash.
So that, we, with that, you know, we don't, we, we are comfortable with transferring, you know, like the thirty thousand from public health over to DPW. It's not going to make, if now, if that free cash projection was, was somewhere around, you know, four hundred thousand, we wouldn't want to do that. We'd want to make sure that we leave as much money to drop to free cash for that future fiscal year as, as much as possible.
Tony, I got a couple of questions actually for you and Allison. First, this is, this is, this is a little different than it has been in the past because most transfers would generally take place at town meeting under Article Two. And apparently, master of law, chapter forty-four, section thirty-three B allows a joint meeting with the board of selectmen and the finance committee to authorize these changes. I believe it's within thirty days or something of the end of the fiscal year. So this is something that at least I hadn't experienced in my, in my tenure. And I think Bob, as chair of the finance committee, I believe, you have experienced this.
This is, this is new to me, too.
Right, so maybe first, Allison or Tony, you could explain, because there may be some people in my boat that would say, what, we never did this before. And I don't object to it. I think it's fine. But maybe a little explanation would be helpful.
Yeah, so this general law came about with the Mass Municipal Modernization Act, which happened several years ago now. There are a bunch of changes to the Massachusetts municipal finance law. And the intention was to make the administration of town budgets a little bit easier and to kind of authorize ways that didn't just have to go through a formal town meeting vote, which many towns only have once a year, maybe twice a year. Prior to this, many towns had to have a special town meeting in order to approve a lot of these types of transfers. So the intention of the Municipal Modernization Act was to allow the board of selectmen with the, you know, concurrence of the finance committee to approve this moving of budgeted funds from, you know, salary different appropriated line items. It was to make the administration of the budget easier.
This, this doesn't, this doesn't preclude what we historically have done at town meeting, should it be necessary?
No, it does not. But this gives us a tool to help us balance the budget at it, at the end of a fiscal year instead of having to do, have another town meeting.
Yeah, it makes sense. Now, I know I, I never used it because it wasn't available. Are you, Bob? My second question is, you, you said that you estimate close to a million dollars in, in potential free cash, although it hasn't been certified. Is that from your assessment on the revenue side or the expenditure side?
So that's, I'm looking at mostly the expenditure side. The expenditures, we have, you know, quite a savings on the expenditure side. A lot of it has to do with the federal COVID money that came in. We've charged a number of expenses to it that we originally planned, you know, for to spend through the general fund because we weren't aware that we were getting another round of COVID money. We have had other savings in some salary line items. One was mine. I didn't have an assistant accountant for several months. So I have, you know, a salary savings there. We have some savings, we had some savings in our retirement appropriation because we paid the retirement appropriation upfront. They give you a little bit of a discount, so we had some savings there. And then we have some savings in our health insurance budget. Again, you know, we have to budget for that prior to the beginning of the fiscal year, not really knowing what plans, health insurance plans, individuals are going to take when they come on board. So we have savings for that this year. Just trying to think. But, so I, I am looking at mostly the expenditure side, Mark.
Okay. My last question, Allison, is, is there any outstanding debt that we could encumber now rather than using free cash?
Yeah, so actually I intend to encumber some money from the current fiscal year to carry over to next year. Well, in July, we have bands that are come due. And my plan is to pay down some of those outstanding bands with money that savings from the current year that I'm going to encumber.
All right, thank you, thank you. Thank you, Tony.
Perhaps explain the process of encumbering.
So basically, an encumbrance allows you to use savings from a current fiscal year budget and carry it over into the new fiscal year budget. It's primarily for services and goods that are ordered in one fiscal year and for one reason or another you haven't received an invoice for. However, since debt is a little bit different, obviously, we budget, the intention is to pay, you know, make principal and interest payments. If there's any savings there, we usually encumber those funds to pay down. We have two debt issues. We have one in June and one in July. So I pay down some debt in June. And then anything left over, I'll encumber the remaining debt funds and pay down the debt in July.
Okay, so I guess two questions. If you encumber it, does it have to retain its purpose? Me, you know, retain the account
Yes.
on which it was encumbered? And then two, what, what is the process for approving the encumbrance itself, if any?
So individual department encumbrances, the department heads. I, I sent out a year-end, you know, budget memo to department heads kind of telling them what the process is and the timeframe is for spending, you know, their appropriated funds by the end of the fiscal year. So they've all received that memo. Any department head that believes they need an encumbrance, they send a memo to me with the amount, the account that they want to encumber the funds from and the purpose for it. And then what I do, I have to do an entry into the accounting system that carries that money over. So that's the process.
So it doesn't require selectmen, finance.
No, no, it does not.
Anything, it's, it's, got it?
Because basically it was appropriated through town meeting for that department's use. So it doesn't require another approval to be carried over.
And Allison, who, who monitors the COVID funding?
In terms of spending?
Yes.
Tony, Tony and I do. And Tony has, I believe, reported to you and, and we've reported to the finance committee what we have spent with COVID funds to date.
The, the state law requires that the city council in a city or the board of selectmen in a town approve those expenditures. So you have done that up to date.
One, one last question, Allison. In terms of the encumbrances, is there any, are you encumbering long-term or short-term debt?
It's for short-term, it's to pay down bands.
Good.
Yep.
Pay that because interest rates are going to get higher and let's try to get them paid off.
Yeah, so we're actually paying down a lot of the older bands. We're paying down a significant portion of those, so we'll be in good shape.
Good, good.
We are in great hands with Allison.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Sounds like it.
Certainly sounds it.
Thank you.
So that's, that's all the transfers. If there's no other questions, then it would be a roll call vote. We, we're in the discussion phase of a motion that's already been read and seconded. So if no other discussion, a roll call vote of both committees. Oh, do it, it looks like.
So this is basically taking some monies, one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars from various accounts and distributing it to other accounts. Say the, to repair somebody's property that where a snowplow damp, did something costing three thousand five hundred dollars. And then there's other, you're just transferring the same amounts into various and sundry accounts. The biggest one seems to be the, well, the sped transportation is exactly the same thing, isn't it? And the legal is the biggest item. It, it's just distributed, taking it, taking fifty-four thousand and distributing it in a different, to, to different accounts?
Yes, so it's, it's, it's money saved in one account being moved over to be expended out of another account.
Tony is superintendent on today?
Thank you.
He, he's not.
Yeah, let me just say for his sake that my experience is that sped, sped transportation is very volatile. Sped tuition is very volatile. You can have in mid-season where a student needs special transportation needs to someplace outside of the district, and they can be very expensive and unanticipated. So I fully understand this thing can happen. It happens all the time.
And as a member of the school committee, I concur with Mark. It happened, I think, when I was on there.
And, and Tony as superintendent has annually returned anywhere from a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars from the school budget back to the general fund for free cash. And he is again this year. So it's just. And he is again this year, so it's just thirty thousand less than what he would have sent back to free cash. It's not that he's, you know, asking for more money from the general fund.
Ready to vote?
Well, on the finance committee side, it sounds like we we need a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion that we uh approve of all of these transfers. Isn't that by the selectmen, though?
Yeah, well, they have to vote in that motion before you make your motion.
Oh, okay.
That's why.
Okay, where where are we?
Uh, just ask for a roll call vote of the selectmen.
Okay, roll call vote, motions been made and seconded, discussion's been had.
What color do I?
Jean can't the eye?
Josh under my.
And uh.
Do I have to read that motion?
Uh, I can read it for you if Peter, you want to follow me by saying so moved.
Okay.
In accordance with MGL chapter forty four, section thirty three B subsection B, the Board of Selectmen with concurrence of the Finance Committee, or strike that, the Finance Committee with concurrence of the Board of Selectmen authorizes the transfer of funds from one appropriation to another as listed in the document provided by the Finance Director.
So moved?
Second.
Right, and then roll call vote, Julie, you did this so well.
Barbara?
Aye.
Beatty?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mcmackin?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanderstein?
Aye.
Dohora?
Aye.
Charmy, aye.
Uh, so while you're on the call, um, you know, I I'd like to uh commend Allison for all the work she's done to put this together. And I'd also ask her um to provide a a very quick briefing on um Munis implementation. I know you've been working, you know, hard on that and there's a lot of hours that are going to go into it. But while we have the Finance Committee, do you mind, Allison, just giving them a quick, quick update?
Please.
Sure. Um, so we um have been assigned a project manager from Munis, who I've met with several times. Um, our meetings are virtual. She's actually located in like Virginia or somewhere. So I've probably spent like fifteen hours um on online meetings with her just to get the process going. The first thing that I'm going to have to do is to build a new chart of accounts in the system. That's going to be the longest process. I'm doing it by myself, um, with some help from the uh assistant town accountant. So Munis and our project manager basically have a calendar from July through April where I'll be meeting with her twice a week um on this implementation, building the chart of accounts. You know, putting it into the system, training staff on how to use the new um software with a hopeful go live date of next April. So that's where we are. It's kind of, I know, um, some people have approached me and asked me about, oh, how's the new accounting software working? It's not just a, you know, turnkey solution or something that you pop into the computer and turn on and start using. There's a lot of work that goes into it. We also are um transferring two years of data from our current accounting software into the new software. So I'm going to have to help with coding that and doing a crosswalk from the old chart of accounts to the new chart of accounts. And then just do a lot of data validation, running reports, you know, making sure that things work correctly. But so it'll be a long process, but right now the the go live date is set for next April.
But why, why April and not June?
So that's a good question, um, because my instinct is to have it at the end of one fiscal year and the start of another. Munis has implemented their software in probably three hundred and forty communities in Massachusetts. And they recommend that we don't implement at the end of one fiscal year and the start of another. It gives you a chance, you know, doing it a a few months before the end of the year gives you a chance to work out some of the kinks that they, you know, you might encounter. There's a lot that goes on at a fiscal year end with closing out budgets. And I think, you know, they just want to give us the opportunity to make sure that the system's running up and running cleanly and smoothly so that we are able to close out the fiscal year.
Systems run concurrently for a few months.
Correct.
Um, and our project manager um has informed that as part of the contract, uh, they're required to host a stakeholder meeting. I think that the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen are certainly considered stakeholders. You know, as well as department head, uh, department heads. We're just trying to figure out, uh, work with them on how that would be, how that would be handled, how that would go, you know, in a public forum or, um, you know, that, you know, residents would be able to, um, you know, listen in as well, which I think would be a good thing. So we're just working out the details on that and the schedule and, you know, that should be coming soon as well. Uh, it probably will be extremely boring and like, uh, a nine AM, you know, Monday morning college class. Advanced statistics, it will be, uh, it will be brutal. But our pro, our our project manager is um very enthusiastic and definitely loves what she does. So we'll.
Beauty is in the eye of the beholder, Tony.
She she's great, she's funny, she's uh, she's very excited about software programming, which is uh not something that usually many people are very excited about. So, um, you know, but it's part of the contract and I think it's valuable for the public and for you, all of you, um, to be aware of what the software is going to, you know, what the benefits are and what the process is. So we're working out those details and we'll, you know, stay tuned, we'll let you know.
I'm so happy for, I'm so happy for you, uh, Tony and Allison, uh, for this upgrade. And I really want to thank the town for appropriating the funds, um, to make this happen. I I know it'll be like night and day. I'm just wondering if this uh, this transfer will come with a new house smell. I'm sure it will. Good luck, sounds great.
I think I think it's exciting. Sorry. Exciting, it'll be a long project. Once it's here, though, it's going to be great. And one of the big benefits of it will be that department heads will have access to the system, to their department data. They can run ad hoc reports themselves instead of solely relying on the accounting office for that information. They should be able to run their own reports, so.
How important. Agreed.
And, you know, once we have the foundation of this installed, there's so many branches of programs that Munis offers when it comes to billing, um, when it comes to uh time and attendance, HR uh benefits, you know, there's so many different, um, so many different branches that permitting, you know, assessors, uh, software and all those systems would be able to communicate with another. So, you know, that's down the road. This is the first step of building this, like I said, a foundation for it. So the the, you know, opportunity for the town to improve other operations uh is, you know, almost endless. There's so much, there's so many things we can do with this program in the future.
Well, it's not just inter- interdepartmental uh components that you're talking about. I would imagine, Tony, it's uh, it's components or portals that the public may be able to access. Whether it's assessors or inspectional services, uh, permitting, those types of things that will allow free access by the public uh for that information.
I think, yeah, I think that there are certain, you know, like you said, branches or portals that can be incorporated. You know, the public wouldn't be able to get into the, you know, the internal network stuff. But there's public facing access, which is going to help remote accessibility, paying online, submitting applications for abatements or applications or, you know, um, parking stickers or and and all of that information. If all those departments are all integrated into one program, you know, uh, you as a resident would like, let's say you were applying for a parking sticker, but you had an outstanding bill in the building department. It would flag you for that right there and you would know exactly why you're being flagged and you can transfer over and pay that bill in order to get your sticker. So there's a ton of different things. I mean, that's a long time down the road, but it we're we're setting ourselves up for that opportunity.
And Allison, I I take it that this comes along, the package comes along with, if you need um technical help, you can still, they're they'll be there for you?
Oh, yeah, so this project manager is assigned to our projects.
Right.
She's certainly there for me, um, even when I don't want her to be there. I'm just kidding. She, you know, her entire focus is to get us up and running by April. So I hear from her multiple times a day, kind of pushing and prodding me to get some of this stuff done. And I do have to remind her that I still have, you know, my regular job that I'm doing too. But she's there for any questions and then they have a whole technical team behind her. So if I have a specific question about, you know, building one account, she can refer me to somebody, but she's.
Continues throughout the life of our of the program.
Oh, yeah, so we have, we'll have a contract with Tyler Technologies and they'll support us for the life of the of the software.
And I take it they're also, it sounded as if Tony said, they're also going to be kind of built in VPN private parts that won't be, I mean, the all of it's, I get that. There's lots of parts to it that will provide both privacy and security, but also the public act, all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, so the part I'm working on right now is just the accounting piece. And that's going to be all internal. There'll be no public facing content for that. But then we'll get into um cash receipts for the treasurer, which again will be internal. But then the third phase is going to be utility billing, which I do think will have a public facing um content to that.
Good, thank you.
We're we're essentially, we're doing ledger and payables? Right now?
Right now, yep, right now it's just general ledger and yes, payables, then we'll go into receivables.
Got it.
Okay, we set?
Thank you.
Allison, Allison, thank you so much. Thanks for all that hard work.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Should the Finance Committee adjourn?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, um, Barbara?
Aye.
Beatty?
Aye.
Brown? No, Brown, uh, Mcmackin?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Vanderstein?
Aye.
Dohora?
Aye.
Charmy, aye, that's seven aye.
I think Brown was on mute, Julie.
Okay.
Brown?
Aye.
Thank you, that's eight aye.
Finance Committee is adjourned. You are certainly welcome to continue to listen in.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks, guys. Okay, uh, new business, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, if you would, Mark, take those, make those motions.
I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Brendan Corret as the treasurer collector for FY two thousand twenty three.
Seconded.
Motion's made and seconded, roll call vote, discussion, sorry about that.
Just in case people don't know, um, it's kind of an unusual situation where the treasurer um needs to be reappointed every year. But um, we're we're happy, I think we're happy to reappoint Brendan Corret again this year, so. That's all I had.
I think I asked this question before, but why why does it require reappointment? Is it, there's something there that says that we can't make somebody a full-time employee as opposed to a reappointed employee?
The town, the town charter uh only calls out the town treasurer collector as a one-year term. So for that reason, so for that reason, we have to reappoint the treasurer each year.
Yeah, I think that's the the chairman, we should probably put on the agenda that, take a look at you know, to amend, because there was one time when the treasurer was elected position, that didn't work out too well. Whoever was most popular will be taking care of your money, so. The town did change its charter at some time, uh, make the uh appointment. But I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that at some point we uh should consider making it uh a longer term appointment.
Make a note of that and see if we can do that. Motion made and seconded, roll call vote.
Josh under my.
My color light.
Jean can't the eye.
Okay, um, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Hamas Gzinski as a full-time police officer.
Seconded.
Discussion. If if I could speak to Tony, we talked about this briefly and I just thought it would be interesting to know how the selection process is completed. So Tony, if you could kind of run through that?
Uh, Chief Furlong is on the call, so I will, I will ask him to uh provide us that briefing.
Great. Okay, so obviously, uh, Gzinski is a a local name, so um, how we got to him was briefly, police reform changed a lot of the way we do some hiring. So we had to have a test. We took the top, we had about just under thirty candidates take the test, which I think for a department I size was huge. We took the top ten candidates and then we had to put them through a physical agility test because they have to meet certain standards in order to get into an academy. Six of those ten showed, four passed. Uh, we took those four and started a background on, uh, we interviewed, sorry, excuse me, we interviewed those four. Then took the top two and did a background and Mr. Gzinski was uh between the physical agility, his test score and his interview, he was, he was chosen as as the top candidate.
And that's great, thank you so much. You know, I thought it was so important to let people know how deep the 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 depth you take in hiring somebody. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome, my pleasure, thank you.
Okay, ma- motion made and seconded, roll call vote?
Josh under my.
My color light.
Jean can't the eye.
I move, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Todd Pierce as in the high police reserve officer.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Chief?
If I just might, um, a- again, police reform uh changed a lot. You're going to see a lot of guys retire once they hit the age and the the time that they have on the job. Todd Pierce has just turned fifty-five and he retired today from the swampscare as a full-time. Todd Pierce has just turned fifty five and he retired today from the Swampscare as a full time. Police officer, he was a midnight sergeant. He's got over twenty seven years of law enforcement experience. So again, you're going to see a lot of new faces, but certainly. The older ones that you're going to see have a lot of experience and a lot to offer for the town. So to me, this, much like others, this is a no brainer to to bring him on as a reserve.
That's great. That's that's excellent. Any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, so chief, a lot of these offices do, you know, fill in for details when needed. And it's good to know that we have retired, trained and experienced police officers on detail. Because you never know when you, you have an emergency during the day, you pull off that emergency and you have to respond to. More serious police work. So it's good to have trained people on board.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Josh?
Yeah, I just echoed the same thought. So we're lucky to have a trained and experienced officer under reserve force. So great news.
Okay, roll call, vote.
I just want, before you vote, I just wanted to add to that discussion and commend Chief Burlong for, you know, the work. That he has been doing, you know, we've had, we've had a lot of appointments come through the board of selectmen for approval. Police reform has put a pretty big burden on the community like ours and, you know, he has. Had the pleasure to endure those changes as a new chief for us and he's done. So I just wanted to commend him for that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
How many full time and how many reserves do we have?
So there's twelve full time employees, excuse me, officers, including myself. So and then it's about, right now, there's about fifteen reserves, but we're going to lose some reserves because the training requirements weren't met. One for age, once we, a police officer in Massachusetts hits sixty five, they can no longer work. So there's a lot of movement, but. We're doing what we can.
Thanks for the info, chief.
Thank you. Tony, we have a.
Go ahead, Josh.
I was just going to say, I think Todd Pierce was my son's coach at Swampscare High as well.
Oh, really? He might have been.
Yeah.
Roll call, vote.
Josh, enter mine.
My color, aye.
Jean can't the eye.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you all. Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve the all alcohol, one day liquor license. To the American Legion Post two fifteen on Friday, July eighth, two thousand twenty two. For five P M to nine P M at the American Legion Post two fifteen, the hot lifesaving station, ninety six, the hot road, the hot gas.
Seconded.
No, motion made and seconded, discussion?
I see Mr. Fields is here.
Hey, I appreciate calling me Mr. Fields and not commander because I am happy to tell you that I am, after two years, no longer the commander. Of your American Legion. And Dan Mc Mackin is our new commander, who I believe he's still on the call. After his participation on the finance call and I'm really excited for Dan and supporting him and. Obviously, since I'm here, still very much involved. But Dan is. Excited to host his first event, which is July eighth. And it is a dinner and guest speaker and the author. Of a book called The Rifle, which is a collection of World War Two veteran stories. Who were inspired to tell their battlefield stories while they were holding the author's M one Garand rifle. Which was used in World War Two. The author, Andrew Biggio, is also a local guy. He graduated from Walden Catholic in two thousand and six and he was a Marine who served in Iraq and Afghanistan. We are excited to host a dinner and hear from the author. Books will be available to purchase as well. It is a fundraiser and half of the funds are going to go to Andrew's. Nonprofit, which support severely wounded veterans returning home, whether it's with housing needs or transportation and more. A great cause and will also support the American Legion as well, you know, and this talk is going to be great. And interesting and moving. Some of our members have heard Andrew speak before. Where the public is invited, tickets are twenty five dollars for the dinner and for the event. We hope that members from the public can join us. And I also wanted to give a shout out to the town. We really appreciate your continued to support. Memorial Day. Was awesome and all of the departments were great and their support of the American Legion as well. So I'm not sure if Dan Mc Mackin, you might want to make any comments on Andrew and the event, but that is why. We're putting in for this one day, their good license to support that event.
Thank you, Bob. We've been lucky to get Andrew to come on and speak to us. He's very eager to have our own World War Two veteran, Virginia Fisk, sign his rifle. He's asked each of these veterans who've given their oral histories of their World War Two involvement. And these oral histories are told by veterans in their nineties and older. And they are the unvarnished stories of of World War Two that we haven't always heard. Haven't always seen in popular media and it's a real compelling. Book and the presentation Biggio gives is is is. Pretty startling for those of us who who've grown up with the popular media version of World War Two. And the, he's a detective in Winthrop and he gives a terrific presentation. And we're looking forward to having Virginia sign the rifle as dozens of others have. As they've given him their 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 stories. So I, I think it'd be a. A wise move for the selectmen to give us a gavel on this and let us move ahead.
That's great. Hey, Dean, congratulations on your appointment. You've got a tough pair of shoes to fill there.
Yeah, that that's for certain, Gene. Thank you. Yes, Bob Fields has done a bang up job. I think as Legion had the wall and Bob was obviously instrumental in bringing the wall to town. I think we've galvanized interest in the Legion and some and, you know. The the wall was certainly a good thing for town.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thanks, Bob, for your time as commander and it sounds like a really interesting event, Dan.
Let me just echo, Bob, you came in at a time. Just about, I, you know, there was a time when I really thought at some point that we were going to lose the American Legion in the heart post two fifteen. It was. It was not going well and you and others deserve a lot of credit to breathe a new life into it. And not only breathing new life into the into the post, but the way you did it by including the community in all your events. Was just outstanding. Is everything that you would wish for in a American Legion post. Be part of the community, a supporter of the community and the community supportive of the post. So. You deserve a lot of credit for that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well said.
Yeah, guys, thank you. I will tell you that it's, you know, it's a team that makes it happen, right? And it's, I'm humbled to have been selected to be able to do that. I'm also kind of happy to take a break as no one's more happier than Mrs. Fields.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, vote.
Josh, enter mine.
My color, aye.
Jean can't the eye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bob.
And and as we look towards this. As you can raise awareness, it's, we we still have some, a few unsold seats and tables. And we hope to max the place out at sixty plus people, just because it's such a such a terrific event. So spread the word far and wide.
Thank you.
Well done.
Okay, ongoing business. There's obviously a major discussion in town with the coyotes. And Tony's been working on this now for the last couple of weeks, trying to find out what we can and cannot do. And the unfortunate part of that is the cannot do's kind of outweighed what you can do. But he's going to give you a brief overview right now of where we stand with this. Okay, Tony?
Sure, you know, we've. I think, I think that we're, you know, believe it or not, I think we're getting to a. You know, a valley portion of coyote activity. They're really, you know, from everything that I've learned. Over the last few weeks, speaking with mass wildlife almost daily, you know, they, there's, they peak activity in the spring. Through June, you know, April through June, when they're protecting their pups and marking territory. And then they peak again in the wintertime when they're trying to, you know, fatten up for the winter, so to speak. So I think we're kind of getting to a, to a better situation for the summer. That less aggressive behavior, but you know, again, everything that I hear. From mass wildlife is ninety nine percent of. The solution, individuals' behavior. That's us as as residents down as human beings and how we interact with the coyotes. You know, making sure that we don't have a food source available to them, whether that be. Bird feeders outside, you know, food, pet food left outside, trash containers. Things of that nature. Making sure that when you encounter a coyote that you are. You are expressing a dominant behavior. So you know, with a coyote, if you you see a coyote, if he walks by you, if it's nonchalant, if it's aggressive, no matter what it's doing. You know, you really want to be the dominant. Party in that, in that encounter. You want to scare the animal, hate the animal. You know, make the animal uncomfortable around humans. Acting casual. And and certainly running away, you know, while you may be afraid of the coyote. That coyote will back down if you express a dominant behavior. And that's going to teach the coyotes that this is not. You know, that humans are not friends and humans are not food or or, you know, a food source. The population will regulate itself. And. You know, I'm sure we'll see a decrease in in coyotes over the summer. And potentially, you know, it will peak again next year around the same time. But a lot of the information that I just said is information I'm getting from mass wildlife. The town in Nahat, the board of selectmen, myself, we do not proclaim to be experts on coyotes and their behavior. And what they like and what they don't like. All of this information is what we're gathering from the state, from the experts. And, you know, we felt in speaking with the selectmen over the last few weeks individually. You know, we felt it was important to have mass wildlife, Mr. Waddles, Dave Waddles. Present that conversation and information to the public directly from him. So we have confirmed him for a six thirty virtual public meeting next Wednesday, July sixth. That will be conducted by Zoom. The link will be on the community calendar. It will also be broadcasted to your local. Public access TV channels. And, you know, with, in speaking with him. He's, he's going to speak about a lot of the things I just said. He's going to explain a lot of the limitations. You know, legal impediments that kind of. Lead to what you mentioned there, Mr. Chairman, about, you know, the what we can't do outweighing what we can do. He'll speak to that and explain it. On the what we can do, which again is very limited from the town's perspective. But we are trying a number of different things. We've, you know. Put up warning signs around town. We're going to add more warning signs, especially in, you know, hotspot areas where we've. Where a lot of sightings of groups of coyotes have been reported to the town. So that people who may not be paying attention but are walking their dogs and are in the area. It gives them, you know, a personal, a sign right there in that area saying, you know, be on high alert. We've purchased. Whistles in the past and we're purchased air horns in the present. They're not delivered yet, but will soon be available. Again, any noise maker or hazing tool of that kind can be purchased by a resident online. At very, very cheap cost, but we're trying to assist in that and have made some, have made a purchase of that as well. We've changed our reporting system. We've created a form that we've consulted with mass wildlife on. And our animal control officer and a police station. Chief Burlong and the and the officers there have worked together to create this form of reporting so that we have consistent data from every. Aggressive encounter that gets reported. Certainly, we're not, we're not keeping track of sightings. It's basically irrelevant information, but aggressive behavior by a coyote, we want to know about it. If you encounter aggressive coyote, you should call the police station at five eight one, one, two, one, two. If it's a immediate threat, the police will respond. If it's not an immediate threat, the police will take your information, share it with the animal control officer and he will follow up. And collect all that relevant information that we will then not only keep on file, but also share with mass wildlife. We've also updated the the nahat.org website. If you go to nahat.org and you click on community. Coyote information is the first option. We're trying, I'm working on creating a, you know, a picture link on the homepage so it's easier to get to. You can also use a search bar and type in coyote. We've taken that, we had a frequently asked questions form. Posted on the website last week. I've had mass wildlife review that and we've made updates to it and that's updated onto the website as well. We have a link to. We have a link to the mass wildlife website there. We have some information about hazing. And and things that we can do as individuals to improve, you know, the situation that we're dealing with. And we even uploaded like a map of Nahat with some hotspot areas highlighted, you know, male marginal road. The Bailey's Hill, Bass Point, Burbish Road by the Bird Sanctuary and. The Heritage Trail have seemed to be, you know, some of the hotspot areas. So we've highlighted those on a map and we'll be putting sign in in those areas too. So from my, from our, from town's perspective, the the biggest thing we can do is education. We are, you know, we're certainly spending a lot of time on that and, you know, hopefully. People tune in next week and can, you know, ask any questions and and hear from the expert at the state. Like I said, it's Wednesday night, six thirty, July sixth. It will be on Zoom. The link will be on the community calendar. It'll also be broadcasted to the local TV channels.
Thanks, Tony. I just want to say, there's a lot of concern, a lot of questions about the coyote situation in Nahat. If you're truly concerned and you really want to have your questions answered, this is your chance. This is Massachusetts expert on this subject, so get on the call.
Thank you, Josh. Mark?
No, I agree. Let's see what they have to say, but thanks for organizing it, Tony.
Yes, for sure. Takes a lot of work to pull that stuff together. And I'm so happy that you were able to get him to commit to the meeting.
I did see a social media video of six coyotes running, running in front of my house last night at some, somehow. There was actually six of them.
Tony, MBTA Better Bus Project.
I was sleeping, so.
MBTA Better Bus Project update. So, Michelle Capano was on the call, you know, brought this to our attention. I'll tell you, you know, getting information from the MBTA about the Better Bus Project has been difficult. From what I understand, the Better Bus Project is a proposal that has not been approved by the MBTA Board yet. And once it does get approved, they will then start to explore changes in the route. And we, I shared what Michelle had sent to us to the MBTA. Also worked with Representative Capano's office has been a huge asset on this. They've spent a ton of time with me and working with the MBTA to try to get some information. We spent an hour trying to navigate the MBTA website and understand how the, you know, the current bus routes in Nahat are going to change. We wrote it all down, submitted to the MBTA. They got back to us and said that it wasn't accurate and that there is no proposed changes currently on the table to our bus route. They did mention that, you know, the Better Bus Project would likely not make any changes to Nahat's bus routes. But instead of directly going to Wonderland, it would go to Central Square potentially, where they would have buses running every 10 minutes to Wonderland from Central Square. So there may be, there may be a change, not in timing, but in the, in the way that you get to Wonderland from Nahat. But even that isn't confirmed yet. And so we, we're basically on their radar for wanting to understand at the earliest possible point what their proposed changes could potentially be so that we could provide comment on that. And that's, that's where I'm at. Doesn't sound like we have anything to worry about right now.
Thanks, Tony. Preserving each point. I have nothing with respect to preserving each point. Josh, I don't know if you do or Mark?
Not, not really. We're still awaiting Judge Karp's decision on the Article 97 in case. The, the summary judgment that was made about 30 days ago. So we're not sure when that's coming, but that's the only update I have.
I have done, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Town Administrators Report.
So part of my report was related to July 9th, which I've already stated, I'll restate that the fireworks are on Saturday the 9th. They will be launched around 9:00 PM. Willow Road will be closed to vehicular traffic and parking starting at 6:00 PM on Saturday the 9th. The Wharf Parking Lot will be closed around noon. And we will be present, we will publicize more information and graphics and details throughout the upcoming week. July 4th is Monday, so the Town Hall will be closed on July 4th. And if anyone has been in the area of Town Hall, you would have seen that work that, the contractor that's been working on the library has now started working on the Town Hall. So working on the Cupola approved, CPC money that was approved at this most recent town meeting has allowed us to approve alternate three and four, which is restoration work on the Cupola and repointing of the chimney on the Town Hall. So there's some work starting at the Town Hall. It's caused us to close the front door, but we are open. You can access from the side door, either on the parking lot side or on the Pleasant Street side. And as far as work going on over at the library, the windows are back in. They've done it, they've done it. We're very satisfied with Homer Contract and doing a great job. And work continues there as well. So that's my update. I mean, as far as, really, we're in prep mode for next week, you know, a lot of, there is a ton of behind the scenes prep work when it comes to the Police Department, the Fire Department and the DPW and Emergency Management. And I commend, you know, Chief Antrim and Chief Burlong, Zach, and the, and the folks over at Emergency Management for, you know, how organized they are and, you know, in preparing for, you know, an increased amount of people and, you know, making sure that we have the right amount of staff in place for any type of event that could potentially occur. They're doing a great job. We've had a couple of meetings so far. We have another one next week. Very detailed op plan, very impressive work on their behalf. And that's, that's pretty much the mode right now is getting ready for next week.
You know, it's interesting to sit here and listen to you rattle off some of the projects that you're working on. And I, I don't know if people, residents realize it, but we each, each Selectman sits with with Tony on a regular basis, at least once per week for a couple hours to review some of the projects that that are ongoing and developing. And I sat with him yesterday and I was just making note of it as we sat there and went through it. We went through 25 or 30 different projects that are ongoing or in process right now. So just to let everyone know that the town has a great team. They're doing a great job and, 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 you know, it's very impressive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll also say that, you know, in, in part of that, we have interviewed a few potential interns to join us until August. And all of them are communications majors. And, you know, we've, in all of those interviews, we've talked about the focus, the internship being improving our communication to the public on a daily basis about things that are happening in Town Hall, at the library, at the DPW Police Station and so forth, giving updates on projects. So we're hoping to enhance that side of the communication, you know, over the next month or so.
Great. Excellent. Citizens Forum. How do we look?
Nothing. Michelle, do you want to speak to the Better Bus Project?
Thanks, Tony. Really not much. We pretty much highlighted the same kind of conversation I've had with Representative Capano's office. It's unfortunate that they're promoting, no, I should say, they're, they're doing a good job at promoting and having the Town Hall virtual sessions and allowing for public commentary. What is just concerning is the, the means using digital to promote the proposed changes in bus schedules, which in fact is, may or may not happen. And then, like you, I was really dismayed to hear that not all of the funding for this effort has received the necessary approvals. And I think the other outlier here is, you know, I think we're going to be waiting for a while. Because we're going into an election season, they're likely going to wait to see what happens with a new administration. So that will further delay any outcome of the project.
Anyone else out there?
Thank you, Michelle.
Brendan Bronnik Olmsted to Summer Street. A general question about the new electronic sign the Police Department wanted to purchase. Does that have remote access and whether or not there, it comes with security, software security, if it has remote accessibility?
I don't know the answer to that, Brendan, but I understand the point you're raising and I'll, I'll share with the Chief of Police.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else out there, Tony?
Well, I'm a citizen, so I just want to say I'm really excited about the next three weekends, Fourth of July activities and the Horribles Parade, followed by the fireworks the next weekend and the Farmer's Market the following weekend. So we're, we're headed into a fun stretch in town here, so I'm excited.
We definitely, we definitely need more vendors for the Farmer's Market for this first one. We're a little, a little bit weak on the amount of vendors so far. But we still have faith. There's still a lot of, there's still a lot of interest for the later ones. It's just that, you know, middle of July is a little tough. But if anyone is out there or knows anyone out there that, you know, does arts and crafts or food or or anything of that nature that wants to be involved, please reach out to the Town Hall. We'd love to have you.
Yeah. And again, just thanks to all the people that have made those events possible. You know, sort of as a community, we've been waiting a long time to really get back into these, these fun events. And there's nothing like summer in the hunt, so I'm excited.
Any, anything else? Anyone? Mark?
Oh, well said, Mr. Chairman.
Motion for adjournment?
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. Roll call?
Josh Antrimai.
Mark Antrimai.
Gene Canty-Eye. Thanks, guys.
Night, everybody.
Good night, everyone. Good night.